Okay, welcome. Welcome to January 12th. This is a work session for the Board of Selectmen. Bill can't be here today, he's traveling. We will stand and honor America with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, this is a work session. Gina, come on down. Are you involved in this too?
I just came to listen in and see if Gina needs any help.
Okay, if you want to come on down, like that. Just a whole happy new year. Thank you for your efforts.
Last night.
Last night?
Yeah.
How did I do?
It was great.
Thank you for taking time out of your personal schedule. We appreciate your efforts, you know that.
Yep. And here is where we go with this Lake Mountain survey. We have deposits or they'll start working on a project. I think we'd like to make a request of them that we have some input, Conservation Commission, in the butter before the final design is worked on, but other than that...
Do you have any thoughts?
Any?
Or any input on what she's saying?
I think doing it right will actually produce the best result for the users as well. So, I'm hoping to see it get done right, which includes, we've had input about different drains in different places, and we really have to sort out where the water goes. We have to make sure that any runoff gets, particularly from the parking lot, gets filtered somehow before it gets out into the lake. So, a good survey is really important.
Mike Phelps said that he remembers that there were two drains that go back under the highways.
All of that needs to be identified.
Yes.
Excuse me.
So, when you go to design phase, all everything, all of those things can be considered.
In theory, the thing is to get the bad water going away from the lake rather than toward the lake, right?
It's all water.
Okay, do you have money in the budget for it?
We have money in the budget for the design. We do not have money in the budget for the permit, because we don't know what the permit's going to cost.
That makes sense, doesn't it? Okay, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I do.
Thank you for your time and energy.
Thank you. As a butterer, I have not received any plan for the proposal. I don't know which way they're going with the water, if they're going directly under the highway at the edge of the port bodies, or if they're going to allow that water with the runoff to come towards me. There are two pressure-reducing culverts that go under the highway and supposedly discharging water into the wetlands and town.
Do you know if they're still functional?
They're functional, but to a point, I still have high water, because the lake is high. They're supposed to haul the trend of the lake as the lake goes up, they'll haul water back, if the lake goes down, they'll haul, they'll hold back, retain water until such time as the wetland is able to discharge into Ninety Mountain Brook. The two, and my concern is the effect of five-day row septic system in Leachfield. I mean, I can foresee pumping my tank out when it's dry with the additional water being pumped into that wetland on the lakeside of the lake, my tank coming out of the ground. Mike Phelps just had two septic tanks put in. He had to put in 450 gallons of water in each to keep them below the surface while construction was going on. And my Leachfield has been there, it's still functioning, and with additional water, it may affect portions of the Leachfield. So, I guess what I would like is some type of an encumbrance on the proposal if it affects our property. In other words, without having to go to court to remedy the effect of any excess runoff on my Leachfield and septic system, some kind of assurances that the town will back up whatever effects this might have on my land.
Do you have any questions or comments?
We haven't done a design yet. I mean, I think...
No design?
No, that's what, that's what we're talking about doing. They're gonna, they need to go out and do all kinds of survey work and...
Right. And we're certainly not going to sit here and give an open-ended assurance of anything.
What?
We're not going to give open-ended assurances of anything until we have a lot more information. So, I think we need to go through the design process, the airing process, and then move forward from there.
Right.
And we have no idea what the effect on anybody's going to be, whether or not...
I think, I speak for the town. We all want to be good neighbors with each other and have in the past, so...
Right.
Basically, what I'm asking for is they're looking for a retainer to start to work this winter, to do the survey work and all that. So, that's, we, that's where we, we need to start there. We need to get started.
And he's part of your committee?
Right, well, that's what I said, we want, we want to change this, so before they do a final design, we have, they give us some information, and there's input from you and from Conservation and Town.
Before we get a permit, the butters have an opportunity to...
You're the impact zone, right?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we're a few days away from that.
That's right. As he said, and he has a track record of, let's do it thoughtfully, and let's do it right, and let's do what was supposed to be. Even before he was chairman of the Conservation Commission, Mike before him, you know, they've been a good team.
I was there too.
They've been a good team, that's right. You were a contributing member, so... So, what do you need from the Board of Selectmen?
I get, like I said, it was just, do we, are we able to accept this, send them a deposit, and get the ball rolling?
How much is the deposit?
Five hundred.
And do you have it in your budget?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a problem with them spending their money?
Not at all.
Do you want to go to a pre-work meeting before they start?
That's what I'm going to ask him to do, because that doesn't mention that in here, and that's what...
Okay, I'd like to be there for that.
Yes, I think it's a matter of record, so how would you craft the motion?
I guess Select Monopoly authorized the Parks and Rec Committee to give Lake Mountain Survey five hundred dollar deposit to start the permitting process for the remediation of the beach.
I second, and I have one thing in discussion. That's the deposit. At some point, they're going to tell us what it's going to cost, right? To do, to do the study?
No, they, yes, they, we know what it's going to cost them to do the design was the seven thousand dollars.
And you have the seven thousand in your account?
They put it, they add it to our budget under each and dog. We do not know what the permits are going to cost at this point.
Right.
Because we don't know how much area we're affecting.
Exactly. That, that makes sense. You have to work before, you have to crawl before you work.
I believe that the legislature just passed a bill that municipalities don't have to pay a fee for permits now, for wetland permit.
That question came up two years ago on Lake Street, and Jack checked something substantively similar, and know that is not true, but it might have changed in the last by any...
I believe it's a new one.
Are we ready to move the question?
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Anything else from Conservation? Anything else from, you, you have one thing, Parks and Rec. Have you had a contact to speak with the rec director about lifeguards?
Yes, of course. Did you get the email, like?
Yes, but she said she was on vacation.
Yes, but if you, I have, you want to read it?
Why don't you just leave a copy?
Okay.
She'll make a copy. Great. Anything else? Again, belated happy new year, thank you folks for all you do, please continue to contribute. We appreciate your, your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, you had something about Rick Vanderpoel, right?
Pretty quickly, yeah.
Oh, I have you. Thank you again.
Okay.
We intended to extend the contract for two thousand dollars worth of work that wasn't completed last year for the Great Medal of Project, and I did not make that deadline. And I just reviewed our budget, and we actually, we didn't spend six thousand dollars of a budget last year. Two thousand dollars is for our secretary. Two thousand dollars was, didn't get spent on Rick's contract, and then two thousand dollars is kind of a little bit here and a little bit there.
For the research.
So, based on that, I'm planning on trying to make it on what we have and not ask for that.
Okay, if I remember correctly, your Conservation Commission voted to encumber some funds, correct?
That was the two thousand dollars I was just talking about. But we didn't spend six thousand dollars.
But all you want to do is encumber two thousand, right?
Well, that's deadline is gone.
Yeah, we don't have a choice. That's all we did.
Okay.
Didn't happen.
Okay.
So, you're going to live with the two grand and hope for the best.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think we can make it.
Okay.
If nothing else, I'll just make sure Leanne doesn't spend any more time than she did last year. We, we, there was a lot of time in master plan that we shouldn't be doing, working on this year, so I don't see her time going any higher than it was this year. That should balance that out. It's, it's a gamble, but I'm willing to take it.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I gave you the names about Clay and Marty. Okay, thank you again. better rates out there, certainly. Happy new year, my friend. All right.
All right.
I don't think Jack has finished negotiating. We want us to do with the library.
Let him keep going.
Come on down.
Yeah, that's fine. So, what are you asking us?
Happy new years to y'all. We're getting ready to craft a warrant article.
Yeah, I've been working on a warrant article.
Go ahead, sir. Do you have some questions?
And, the long and the short, shall I read the whole thing?
We've got some more prices from Jack Widmer. Go ahead.
See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of one million nine hundred
Have you guys seen them?
No. thousand and twenty thousand dollars to renovate and expand the current library and to authorize
From Norway Bank and...
Northway.
Yep.
So, five-year rate of two point three, and seven-year rate of two point five, so the issuance of not more than one million one hundred thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with RSA thirty-three. that's pretty favorable.
Sorry, I should have given you guys probably here some emails a few at each.
Negotiate notes to determine the rate of interest, their on maturity, et cetera, et cetera. Furthermore, authorize the withdrawal of four hundred ten thousand five hundred forty-three I've been working on the warrant article. dollars from the existing library capital reserve account fund, and four hundred nine thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars from the library capital donations fund. That's the way the math works out this morning.
We have, I can get to my wood for it.
Year-end, Pete Schlesky came, Christie, yesterday, the capital reserve fund adds up twelve thirty-one, and that figure's now four hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay.
Why don't you just write balance?
I'm sorry?
Why do you have to put a number, and why can't you just write the balance currently as of...
Because it all has to add up, but the voters have to look at the one-nine that we're going to spend, and where's the money coming from? And one, one point one, or no more than one point one, is going to come from borrowing, and where's the rest of it come from? So, by putting in no more than one point one million dollars, I'll change it to four hundred sixteen thousand for the, for the library number.
And we can change that number right up until the deadline?
Right.
Yep.
Right.
So, it's actuarially correct?
But...
No, when those warrant article has to be legally accepted.
So, the no more than is the operative language, so four hundred sixteen thousand, it's eight grand. Yeah, not going to quite get us down to one one. But I also want to...
You haven't factored in the pledge money yet, I think.
I'm only using the number you've given me.
Okay, that's hard cash, but you have mine too. We have about a hundred thou, better than a hundred thousand dollars in pledges too.
Well, there needs to be a language that if, between now and then, additional donations come in or additional pledges, that will drive, that will drive the borrowing note down.
Well, that's correct.
But we need to, at some point in time, draw a line in the sand and say, okay, we can set up a note how much we borrow.
Up to, up to one one?
Because what we do is we go out within twenty to thirty, thirty days before, and that walks it in over the bank. Some of the banks...
But if we push it under a million dollars, it might change something. So, we might get an obligation from a bank for a million one, and then come May, when you get your pledges and everything set up, it's nine hundred and fifty thousand.
I understand how it works.
They might want a different deal.
Well, we did the same thing at the library, at the fire station.
That was for the televisions, because it's not bigger for...
The, the project came in, and I think there was thirty-seven thousand dollars left over, and we encumbered that, as you, as, like we did in Lang Pond, what happens if cement breaks or something like that.
And we may, I mean, you may decide not to, I mean, your board may decide not to take all the money out of that donation fund for, for the building and reserve some of it for whatever else happens in the library, so...
And when, I have another question. When you say remodeling the current building, that also includes the infrastructure, parking lots, septic systems, et cetera, in that, when you say building project, that's part of the project, right?
Building, yes, it's a building.
It's clear.
Okay. Replacing ceilings, that sort of thing. Mass holes them right now.
So, do you want me to plug in four hundred sixteen thousand, or do you want to weigh and have the...
What, for the capital reserve?
From, from the library's capital donations fund.
I would, I would plug in what we have in cash at the end of the fiscal year, which I think we gave you the number last week.
I did, I did too.
Okay, and then the up-to-date capital reserve amount. Hopefully, it'll be more in capital reserve in three months of park, tomorrow, as soon as what it is. Then we'll get the town, they'll have a better picture. Those, those are, those are good, hard numbers, so they can always explain to people saying, by the way, this is up to one one, but we don't anticipate it's going to be one one.
Right.
But not going to, I don't think we should do that until we are there, until we're at the meeting, or close to it. We're going to have a series of public meetings on this end of this library. We have three scheduled...
Oh, good, good, good.
Three Saturdays.
Good.
One to do at the, one to do at the school, but there's no weekend custodial staff, so the good news is school on weekends. We don't like to do it at night, because people only do two things at night. So, we've got three, three scheduled, up to the last one, the leak before the annual meeting. And S and P, our architect will be there.
And hopefully, we'll get some newspaper.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Get some articles coming with.
Question from Professor Madison, so...
Just so that there is not quite so much in bumbling and circling, using come town meeting. I mean, if you're really going to have, if you do three meetings and do some, some pretty good stuff, it's in our job. And I think it sounds as though that number's going to get pushed under a million dollars ultimately, if you say you've got another hundred grand in pledges.
I'd like to think we're going to do better than that, but...
Yeah, but I mean, if we can come under a million dollars, I mean, it really breaks the back of the resistance, I think.
Certainly, certainly. And you had to...
Two military...
Have you been, have you been working on wording for a, the...
Previous warrant article?
The warrant article to change the purpose of the capital reserves?
Right.
Okay.
Those two are going to be done today.
Okay, and then...
And the septic system, I had, I didn't do that building, the septic system. Karen, is that done?
We should have a summary on Friday stuff.
Shall I?
And we just need to vote on, need all today, okay?
What?
Need to vote on, all three today, please.
Okay. Right, so to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of thirty thousand dollars to replace the septic system at the public library, this article is contingent on, this is article six.
Yes.
This article is contingent on article five not passing. If article five passes, this article will be null and void. So, we'll do the landmark first on the septic system. And before that will be the capital reserve, the language changes, to see if the town will vote to extend the purposes of the previously established library capital reserve fund to include expansion and renovation of the existing library building. This capital reserve fund was established by a town meeting on March two thousand and ten, article twelve of the town warrant, for purpose, quote, for purpose of building a new library, close quote. So, that'll be the first vote. Second vote is the library, third vote is the, is the septic system. We're no vote on the septic system at all.
Do we want to vote on each article separately?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay, first of all, I'll take the substance in your warrant article, and I'll make, I'll move, we recommend.
I'll second.
Now, but under the discussion, we understand that there may be some fine tuning actuarially as, in the next three months, income comes in, or a new interest rate comes in, or something like that. But we're talking substantively here, and the purpose of the warrant article.
It will be warrant article number five, and it establishes the price of the library expansion as being one million nine hundred twenty thousand dollars, and with a maximum borrowing of one million one hundred thousand dollars.
Everyone clear on that? Ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Article four, which is the, change the purpose, release of capital reserve funds, I move the question.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
Karen, are we certain that this language is all we need to do?
That's what Bill proposed. We'll send it to DRA to confirm.
Okay.
Yep.
And we'll have an answer before next Tuesday?
No, I don't think so. So, there'll be initial review at the Budget Committee, but, yeah, I will make sure they get the initial, at least.
And you second the motion?
I did.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. And then article six, which is, you've read, which has to do with the, it's a backup, in case the library doesn't pass, we still get the septic system done. Okay, I'll make that motion, we recommend.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Yes, Jack made the comment, can it be changed at some point, like at town meeting? What if it comes back as a twenty thousand dollar project, or what if it comes back as a forty thousand dollar project? And we'll have that information at town meeting.
Right.
But, but this is substantively. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Anything else from the library?
As a matter of fact, there is.
Go ahead, sir.
And this is, this is almost housekeeping. At the end of our fiscal year, end of our calendar year, we had seven hundred and fifty dollars left in our salary account that we'd underspent, okay? We had the same situation last year for, I think it was close to fourteen or fifteen dollars. And we returned that money back to the town as, as a side loss, which are really, really outside me, there's always that, this one, this one building, let's, let's do something. We would like to take that seven hundred and fifty dollars this year to offset the sixteen hundred dollar plus loss we had with the bad pipes and the, and the, just to help bring us, help make us whole. None of that was for sure, so it came out just out of normal everyday operating budget. So, we had to do a few things, we didn't get to do a few things we wanted to do. We'd just like to keep that seven hundred and fifty dollars this year.
You have any thoughts?
Well, we can encumber after the first of January, so that's maybe a question. Where would you put it if you had it?
Would you, we'll probably go back to our collection fund.
I guess we need to ask DRA or...
At least Diane.
At least Diane, whether or not we can do that. But I don't have a problem with the library keeping mine.
Can, can you check with Diane before you wait?
Can I? Yeah. And this is, she has this information, and Marjorie Hutter sent it over the other day, so I'll ask her.
Sure. All right, yeah, and if, you know, I just know we can encumber after the first.
I just want to make you aware of it.
Above that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt Bailey came to Christmas.
How's he doing?
He's in the hospital now, but somewhere he found this sweater that had a fireplace boiler on it, and a window, so he could put his phone in there with a fire burning. Talking about bad Christmas sweaters, that makes him want to...
Okay, have these for us?
Yeah.
Just, just make me a copy, okay?
Yeah.
You'll need more, right people?
Sure. Hopefully, like Tuesday next week, Jack Widmer will be back with whatever other information comes up with.
Okay. What else? Do you still possess the awards or warrant articles this morning?
I, we can, yes, but I was asked to just interject two things here.
Okay, that's fine.
Then I'll go right to warrant articles.
We had to do revenue today, too.
Yes.
Um, are we doing other warrant articles today?
I have none, yeah.
Okay, I didn't have, I didn't know that, so there's something you need to get in the other hand. And revenue is not ready till Monday, no, Monday the twenty-second.
What happened today?
Twenty-second for revenue.
Really?
I thought.
I thought I saw it last Monday.
I'll go check, but I thought that was, I thought the rest of the warrant articles and revenue were for the twenty-second.
Because I had asked Bill if you needed to be here for revenue, and he said no.
Oh, okay.
We're going to be later, be gone for two weeks, so I don't want inconvenience to these citizens.
Mr. Chairman, there's going to be more drilling this morning, so, like the interruption you...
Drilling.
This saw's oozing something downstairs, and they're doing stuff upstairs, so it's just an FYI?
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
Uh, this is intent to cut Matt Block Lot thirty-four dash one dash one. I move we accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Diane's on the phone right now, but she didn't say if you wanted to revenue, you can, but she didn't know you wanted to do it.
Well, I'd like to...
Yes.
Take something as a budget. We're not meeting one day.
Uh, this is for tax Matt Block Lot, scepter forty-two dash one dash twelve. Do we accept?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. While there's frost in the ground, while it's undercut...
I didn't have, I didn't know that, so it's something you need to get, okay? And revenue is not ready till Monday, no, Monday, the 22nd.
What happened today?
22nd for revenue.
Really?
I thought.
I thought I saw it last Monday.
I'll go check with Diane, but I thought that was for 22nd. I thought the rest of the month was revenue.
Because I asked Bill if you needed to be here for revenue, and he said no.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna be later, be gone for two weeks, so I don't want inconvenience these citizens.
Mr. Jim, there's gonna be more drilling this morning, so, like, the interruption you...
Drilling.
They, they saw something downstairs, and then they're doing stuff upstairs, so it's just an FYI?
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
Uh, this is intent to cut Matt Block Lot 34-1-1. I move, we accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Diane's on the phone right now, but she didn't say if you wanted to revenue, you can, but she didn't know you wanted to do it.
Well, I'd like to...
Yes.
I'll take something as a budget. We're not meeting one day.
Uh, this is for tax, Matt Block Lot, Sector 42-1-12. Will we accept?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion passes two zero. While it's frost in the ground, while it's undercut.
Can you please let me know who moved and I seconded the first intent?
Always move everything I seconded.
Thank you.
Just ditto. Okay, is there a warrant article you wanna work on?
What were you thinking when you said that?
I had a couple from Monday to 22nd, like, for reviewing things, and for meeting with Jim.
What were we, what were we after? I thought we did most...
Yep. The one with Jim for the paving of the garage, so we have to wait for him. Health insurance, I know you were wondering if he per not, and stuff like that, so...
Yes.
Actually, I think there's another one.
For Jim, can he give us a breakdown of the cost of a construction project? All he's done is given us a estimate for the paint room.
The only one that I remember that we needed to chat about, but I guess we need to have Bill there as well, is once we get a total on what we've, what we've decided to spend, whether or not we want to do that trust fund warrant article for this, hopefully, this year, or move it to next year. What were your thoughts on that?
Uh, that was our strategy, you know, uh, take everything collectively and reexamine
Because the gross looks pretty good, I think, but the actual dollar amount, I don't think it's that far off last year.
Well, the big thing is, it was you and Bill's work there, when, with all the changes in this fluid, is, is the healthcare went down, what was it, $76,000?
$76,000, right, but I'm not certain it's gonna do that next year.
No, that's just so volatile, but, you know, you... And, and I ran that by my contact, and he says, and I noticed two other towns were able to do exactly like we did, not, not as much as we did, but their thinking is parallel.
Excuse me, we got a warrant article, Bill put a note in about Sodden Road.
Yes, would you, would you explain that, please?
Bill thought, didn't know, wanted to ask you folks to talk about if you wanted to go up for bidding to get an actual price before town meeting. And I put a sample proposal, RFP, you know, public notice and paperwork.
I have no problem going with, with the bidding.
Yeah, I don't either. I think we need to live with the warrant article written at $64,000, or whatever it was, until we get that in.
That's right. That's an important road. You, you know, just when the tree and wires were down for four days, the phone rang off of here, you know, it's the busiest road in town.
You keep saying that.
Well, part of it's...
I don't know if it is.